Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Weathersfield Board of Education. Tonight is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, and we are in the Town Hall Chambers. Ellen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Kerry. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Granato, present. Mr. Healy? Mr. Lacavoli?
Here.
Dr. Regan-Lafreville? Mr. Riley? Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Chairperson Kerry?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. If we could all rise and have a moment of silence. Weathersfield School System lost a valued staff member this week, Barbara Landrigan. If we could stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. And if the head of the C I A C, Mr. Glenn Lungarini, could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that'd be great.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Emmett, student staff recognition.
We do have one staff recognition this evening. I'd like to invite Mr. Glenn Lungarini up to the podium to present award, an award to Christine Mori. Christine is not yet with us, but Glenn, if you give us a little background on this award, quite prestigious.
Sure. Well, thank you, Superintendent Emmett. Chairperson Kerry. Again, it's such a pleasure to be here in Weathersfield. We love coming out and we host a number of events here in Weathersfield. You know the magic of a new school year is here when you walk in and saw that rainbow coming over the proceedings today. So what a magic touch. Expect nothing less when we come here to Weathersfield. The Connecticut Association of Schools is proud to recognize Christine Mori as the CAS William Chesli Kowski Outstanding First Year Principal Award recipient for the 2021-22 school year. In her first year as a principal of High Crest Elementary School, Christine established herself as a strong and innovative educational leader who is a model for others. According to her staff, her motto, "Better Together," is evident in her daily commitment to building meaningful relationships, collaboration, and ensuring everyone's voice is heard. Principal Mori's courage and resilience allow her to navigate the routine challenges of building leadership and stand as a pillar of strength for others when a clear and concise direction is required. These leadership qualities were demonstrated when Christine embraced the opportunity to audit the welcoming climate and culture of High Crest. That collaborative reflection by all High Crest stakeholders improved the school's learning environment and connection to students, staff, and community members. Principal Mori is a risk taker and a visionary who facilitates courageous conversations aimed at keeping every action in her school, community, and student centered. At CAS, we measure success in terms of the meaningful relationships developed within our school communities and the lasting impact our contributions make to better educational experience for those who follow us. In her first year, she exceeded that definition of success, and the impact of Christine's leadership will undoubtedly positively impact more people than she will ever know for years and decades to come. With that, it is my pleasure as the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Schools to present Principal Christine Mori with the 2021-22 William Chesli Kowski Outstanding First Year Principal Award. Mr. Rem, I'll present to you on her behalf.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Lungarini.
Thank you, Mr. Lungarini. And I'd just like to echo the sentiments that Mr. Lungarini mentioned with regard to Ms. Mori. She has been an exceptional administrator, a true leader in the Weathersfield Public Schools, and we're all extraordinarily proud of her. So congratulations, Christine.
Any board members with comments?
Well, you know, I would like to just say something about her. When we did the interview for Christine, it was amazing to read her resume, but what caught my eye was she was at Penn State or University of Pennsylvania. I do forget that.
Penn State.
And she was on their varsity women's basketball team. And I said to her, what did you learn from that experience? And she said teamwork. And she said that when you're at the foul line, you make it. And it was great. And you know something? Women in sports do make a difference. So it was great to talk to her then, and she's great to have here.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Mr. Cassio?
Yeah, I'm just really thrilled and excited for Christine. I knew the day that she came in for the interview, she was the right person for Weathersfield. She was excellent. So congratulations.
Thank you. Any other board members? Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Emmett, any other student staff recognitions?
That's it this evening. Mr. Kerry, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cassio, I believe you have a motion for us?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for a previous board meeting on June 14th, 2022.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment? Anyone in the public question may comment. Please state, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have Public comment is now closed. Communication, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you, Mr. Kerry. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the 2022-23 school year. It's been a while since we've been together. I do have a variety of updates for you this evening that I want to make sure I bring you and the public up to speed on. I want to certainly first talk about safety and security. Over the course of the summer, Security Director Mike Bearball, who's with us this evening, worked on updating the district's All Hazards Plan to ensure that all safety and security protocols are up to date. On August 4th, the district hosted the CREST team at Weathersfield High School for training. This is a regional response force that includes multiple officers from the Weathersfield Police Department. They spent the day at Weathersfield High School, training in real-world environments. And I'm proud to say that this actually is the third school in Weathersfield that they have been to. They have also trained at Charles Wright. They've also trained at High Crest as well. So anytime the CREST team wants to use a school for training, we go out of our way to make sure that we provide them a space. Again, we think it's opportune to be able to provide them with an experience where they can see, you know, what our schools are like. I will say the training is intense. It is anything like what you saw in Uvalde, Texas, back in the spring. So again, my thanks to everybody on the CREST team for participating, and we stand ready for further training opportunities in the future. Also want to let everybody know, from a perspective of getting ready for the start of the school year, our own police force, the Weathersfield Police Department, will be very visible as we start the school year. So parents should be used to seeing the PD around our buildings throughout the course of the first week. In addition to that, our SROs are currently in place at Weathersfield High School, as well as at Silas Dean Middle School. I am also very happy to report that the DARE program will be making its return to the elementary level this year. Thank goodness, it's been a while. Emergency drills such as fire and lockdown drills will start occurring within the first week of school. So parents, get your students ready. We're going to start that process immediately. I want to talk a little bit about summer building work. You know, again, it's been a challenge this year without having the summer help that we typically have in going around the buildings and talking with custodians this summer. They have been stretched in terms of manpower, so it has been quite the challenge. The Charles Wright portables are currently being refurbished. The interior portions of these units are done. Right now, Mr. Sharkevich, the town carpenter, is in the process of putting siding on over the existing paneling. They certainly look a lot better than they did. They'll be functional hopefully for the remainder of the lifespan of that building. Those portables were delivered here 22 years ago, according to the data plate that we found when we were doing the refurbishment. So it's, they've been there for quite some time. I will say that we have been dealing with a couple of skunks over there, unfortunately. So we've caught two. I noticed one on surveillance going under the building, so did let Mr. Sharkevich know. Thankfully, we got that one, and we caught another one this morning. So we are definitely making sure that all rodents are out prior to that siding getting done. From a perspective of Silas Dean, you may end up, when you go to visit Silas Dean, seeing that the sidewalks have been fixed. In addition to the sidewalks being repaired, we've also had two catch basins that were in the process of collapsing. Both of those have been replaced by the Public Works Department, so we are in much better shape over at Silas Dean. We've done a variety of miscellaneous AC repairs throughout the district. And again, right now, we're dealing with the yearly mold issue over at Webb that's being worked on right now. And I will say also, typical summer cleaning has occurred across all buildings. Again, it's been a challenge this year with having all of our extra after-school programs and summer programs in buildings that we typically don't use, but we will be ready for September 1st, to say the least. Another item for you, this went out to the community last week. Want to just report upon it again. The district will be offering free breakfast and lunch for the entirety of the 2022-23 school year. This will be done through the utilization of our Weathersfield Public Schools Cafeteria Fund, as well as a $495,000 SMART grant that we are receiving from the state of Connecticut. It was our intent from the beginning to be able to at least provide breakfast for the entirety of the year, and with the additional $495,000 from the state, that has allowed us to be able to cover lunch as well for the entirety of the school year. So very happy about that. But we are recommending that parents still fill out the free and reduced lunch forms. That data is critically important. It does allow for additional resources to be provided to families, so please, parents, get that free and reduced lunch application filled out. And then I'd also remind everybody that we will be starting up our point-of-sale process again. Over the past couple of years, what we were doing with breakfasts and lunches is, it was just a tally. We're going to go back to the system now where we will actually have to put in PIN numbers for each student as they go through to get their lunch. And please remember, students, the chips and all of the snacks, as well as second breakfast or second lunch, you do have to pay for. Just want to make sure I get that message out there. Very happy to say that we had new teacher orientation begin yesterday. We were all over at Weathersfield High School. Thank you to all board members that were able to attend. We were thrilled to have you there. So new teachers in the district this week are, provided a variety of different training opportunities from curriculum, human resources, safety and security, time in their rooms, and time to collaborate with each other. So we're certainly looking forward to many years of faithful service from our new staff members that have come in. And then I also want to let everybody know, it is transportation time. The phone calls are starting to come into the superintendent's office with questions around transportation. So I do want to let you know, Mr. Kazakh and I this morning visited with our bus drivers from the Autumn Bus Company. They'll be covering our routes again this year. We had the opportunity also to meet with owner Sal Mazada, as well as dispatcher Cheryl Kalberg. At this point in time, we expect that Autumn will be fully staffed and ready to go with drivers for all of our routes. As is the case every year, I do want to say that patience is the name of the game. Schedules may be off a bit to start the year as drivers learn routes, and we are always looking to refine routes. So it takes a little bit of time, so do be patient. And again, please understand, bus routes are posted on the district website, and rare reminder, already in?
This week.
This week, coming in. Rare reminder, this Friday. Thank you, Matt. And then finally, last but not least, students in the crowd, let me just remind you, the first day of school is September 1st, next Thursday, so plan ahead. That's communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to action items. Mr. Lacavoli, I believe you have a motion for us?
I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the attached proposed schedule of regular Board of Education meetings for the 2022-2023 school year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or just comments?
Can't wait for June.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Cassio, I believe you have a motion for us? No, no, oh yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Amanda?
I move to approve the educator evaluation flexibilities for 2022 to 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Emmett, you have any background you'd like to share?
Yeah, this is a standard protocol. This is exactly what we did last year. The state provided us with flexibility for the evaluation instrument. We did consult with the teachers' union on this, and they were in agreement with it. So this is just something the state requires, just board approval, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
I?
Yes, Ms. Granato.
Was there a committee that did this? Sally, was there? There used to be, that's why I'm asking, and I didn't see any info on it. I do have some other questions, too.
Yeah, because these are, flexibilities are exactly the same as last year. In consult with the teacher union, we decided to agree, they have to mutually agree to accept them, and because of the flexibilities, it's really a really easy decision to make, both with the teachers and the administrative union. So it was no committee meetings around these because they're the same as last year. But the committee will be meeting, I expect, additional meetings this year because we expect some, there's a statewide committee working on teacher evaluations to bring forth some changes and recommendations. We haven't seen them yet, but we expect that committee to be busy this year with some new information. But because this is the same as last year, it was pretty routine.
So this basically comes from the state?
Correct. And there's no choice in the matter. It's either we adopt all of them as is or not. And so it'd be my recommendation, move forward with them, just providing more flexibilities to teachers. They were greatly appreciated last year, and administrators.
And the committee last year had lengthy discussions around the adoption of this.
Yep.
So it was already vetted out through that committee?
Last year.
Last year. So it's the same thing.
Yeah, so I had a question. When I was just reading over, I don't have it in front of me, but I do remember something that popped in my mind that I thought was a great idea.
Yeah.
There was a mention of something being done to address the mental health and well-being of teachers. We know that they've kind of been put through the ringer the past couple of years. I was wondering if there are any examples, or if there's any concrete plans, or if that's just an idea?
So I think this section you're probably referring to is student learning outcomes, or SLOs. And one of the flexibilities is be able to create a SLO around social-emotional learning. So the social-emotional learning is tied to our curriculum that was implemented, our new curriculum that was implemented last year with Rethink Ed. So actually, many of our teachers, with the emphasis on social-emotional learning, a new curriculum, but the need to support and explicitly teach the social-emotional skills, did select goals based upon the implementation of that. Excuse me. Monitoring student learning around social-emotional learning. So because it's about teacher evaluation, we measure impact on student achievement, and so their goals would have been focused around teaching that to students.
I thought there was a section that addressed dealing with the mental health and well-being of teachers and/or staff or administrators.
So the flexibilities allow educators to prioritize the continuing need to focus on social-emotional learning and overall well-being of students, staff, and educators. But it's still, it's the teachers. This whole document's geared toward teachers.
I think probably what you've interpreted is the need during the pandemic and continuing as we live through the pandemic to focus on the health of social-emotional learning, most definitely. I think the work around social-emotional learning, students, staff, families, our community continues, but specifically, they would build goals around student learning.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then if I could just add, Matt, you know, it's interesting you bring that piece up with the mental health piece. You may remember, last year, one of the things we did, we actually enhanced our employee assistance program. So, you know, again, knowing, coming out of the pandemic, the pandemic impacted us all. So, you know, we did not have a very robust EAP program, and I know, Mr. Donahue, had presented last year that we were going to go with a different company that had a much more robust offering. And actually, one of the things that we do in all of our buildings, we post that information, even in the Stillman Building. It is readily accessible, so if you need that level of support, you just, it's one number to call, and EAP is there, so.
Okay. That's what we were kind of looking for, was that through this stress, you know, what did we do for teachers?
Yep.
So we don't want to lose them.
No, no. I think that, you know, culture and climate and supporting all layers of our organization continues to be incredibly important.
I have another question, Chuck.
Yes, Ms. Granato.
Okay. You know, there was one part of this I absolutely loved, and it was working with the family and have more family engagement. I have to tell you, you know, being around town as much as I am, I heard from so many parents that the communication skills of the teachers to the parents and back again was phenomenal, and I'd love to see that continue with or without a pandemic, because it really makes a nice relationship.
Yeah, that's a great thing to highlight in these flexibilities that wouldn't have been there prior to the flexibilities being approved by the state Board of Education. But yeah, that's one of the silver linings.
Mr. Roberts?
One thing I was noticing, I know this is from the state, but under student learning indicators of how the teacher SLOs, and they have one, but they need to develop two or more indicators or measures of accomplishment to expand areas of progress, growth, or accomplishment addressed through one SLO. So is the state actually saying they really do have to have three goals?
So it's actually two goals. It's kind of the language I use. So, and let me give you an example. An SLO, or the student learning outcome, could be improved comprehension. And there are I A GDs, indicators of academic growth, could be that I'm going to measure comprehension through the reading assessment one and a rubric two, right? And so it allows to have multiple measures. So just like when you go to the doctor and they measure your health, they don't take your blood pressure and give you a report card grade on your health, they take your blood pressure and your temperature and your blood work, right? They use multiple indicators. So we encourage our teachers to use, look at multiple sources of data, because it tells a different story about students. So we don't measure, track student growth just on one or two measures. And in fact, many of our teachers might say, I'm going to, you know, have conference notes and two reading assessments. And their assessments are already given in class, but it helps paint a picture around if a student didn't meet a goal at one assessment, but they grew in different ways as measured by different types of assessments, they can still meet their goal because they have measures, different ways to prove, right, your health. You may have bad cholesterol, but everything else is really healthy, and you might meet your goal. That's why we use multiple measures. So a minimum of two, but most of our teachers will choose to use more, just because it gives us a broader story of our students and allows them to meet their goals with greater success in many cases.
So there's, so there's two more assessments, there's not two more objectives that they have to go after?
Correct. It's how they measure them.
Okay.
Yeah. Nope, how they measure them.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Stolli. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Mr. Emmett, report and discussion items.
Yeah, we have several this evening. Mr. Kerry, I'd like to start off with a COVID-19 update, if I could have Mr. Mike Bearball come up to the podium and chat with us a little bit about where we're headed this year for COVID-19 response.
Hopefully in a very good direction.
Excellent.
So I worked with head nurse Elda Marcelinas. We looked at the guidance from CDC, DPH, and CDSC, and what we're going to do is adopt that strategy of test, mask, and go. So what that means is, the state put that out for direction. We're coming up on allergy season, flu season, cold season, along with COVID. So what the, what the program does is, if you're fever-free and you have mild symptoms, you can report to school wearing a mask, but you must test every day before you come in. If you test positive, obviously you stay home. You follow the isolation protocols. So that will give everybody an opportunity, and we have plenty of tests, we're going to get out to all the schools and provide them, to miss very little school if you have symptoms, but it's not COVID-19 related, because we know everything is going to crop up in the fall again like it normally does. If you do test positive for COVID, we will follow the protocols that we followed at the end of last year. It's a five-day quarantine, return on day six. If you have no fever and your symptoms are significantly improving, but you must wear your mask through day six through day 10. And those strategies work for us at the end of the year, so we're going to implement that again, and that's what the state recommends. We do recommend, we encourage folks who want to, you can wear your mask in school. There's nothing to preclude that at any time. If you do have symptoms, we recommend you do. And again, test kits, we have a number of them. So our test kits that were provided to us last year from the state of Connecticut had expiration dates between the end of June and beginning of July. The FDA sent out a list, and I looked at our lots, our test kits have been extended for six months, so they bring us to the end of December, beginning of January. When those run out, there is plans from the state of Connecticut to provide more tests, so we will not run out of tests. And I have that document and data I'm going to provide to the nurses so we can verify which parents, that these tests are still valid through the FDA. So those are our plans moving forward. The only thing that's really going to be different for us is that if we, our nurses would send certain kids home with specific symptoms, because that's what the recommendation was, now they're going to be able to wear a mask, take a test before they come to school, and if it's negative, they can continue to come and learn in person. Once their symptoms are gone, if they never test positive for COVID, masks can come off back to normal. So we're going to not have a quarantine, and we're still not going to do contact tracing. So we'll lose less days of school for kids that didn't have COVID but may have some minor symptoms. And our nurses are going to be well-vetted with that, we're doing PD with that. I have Elda put together, we worked this, we put this together, this will go up on our website, so parents are informed, our nurses will be informed, our staff will be informed on how to do it. And there'll be links to the CDC. So all the information is there for everybody. But our goal is to keep our kids in school, get them learning in person, unfortunately, unless they have COVID, then it's just a lesser isolation so they can get back quicker.
Mike, can you talk a little bit about vaccinations? Because I know, you know, prior to, you know, now, I know we were not able to vaccinate our youngest students. That has changed over the course of the summer. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Yep. So now vaccines are available for all our, all of our school-aged children. So they're readily available with, with, out here, you can call your pharmacy, you can go to your pediatrician. They're readily available, and all of our students have the opportunity to be vaccinated, fully vaccinated. And boosters are out there, readily available for our staff and our older children as well. So the vaccine portion, it's out there, it's readily available. Our whole community should be able to be vaccinated if they choose to come to school. So that, that's very, and most, and a lot of our, from our staffs that we've seen, we have a good vaccine rate, we always have in our district.
And I also want to make sure everybody is aware of just the fact that we're going to continue to report to the DPH. That was one thing that the state said during their summer meeting, that they still want districts to report cases. We will continue to have our dashboard up on our website so that you can see exactly how many cases are coming in. Over the course of the year last year, I went from a daily communication to a weekly communication. This year, I'm planning on communicating if I'm seeing specific outbreaks within schools. We'll keep the dashboard up so you can see a real-time, weekly occurrence of positive cases. But I know last year, in the spring, we had a couple of situations, I know over at Emerson Williams in kindergarten, where we saw a heightened number of cases. We gave out test kits to the entire class, and were able to identify a couple of additional students that had it, that were asymptomatic, and we were able to stop the spread from getting beyond those classrooms. So the one thing, over the past two years, we've gotten pretty good at being able to respond to this. It's not going away. I'm certainly hopeful that we can get to the point where it becomes more of an endemic than a pandemic. And I will say also, to Mike's point with regard to mask-wearing, you'll hear this evening a couple of presentations regarding class and E S Y, and it was very interesting. We still saw students that came in wearing masks. And again, that is perfectly fine. You know, I think when we were talking about masks becoming optional, there was some concern about kids being made fun of or being picked on. We have not seen that at all. And again, that is perfectly fine. You know, I think when we were talking about masks becoming optional, there was some concern about kids being made fun of or being picked on. We have not seen that at all. It has been a very natural process. Some wear them, some don't. So again, we'll continue to encourage that. And obviously, as we get deeper into the cold and flu season, we'll be monitoring. And I will say to all parents, do not hesitate to contact your school nurse. They are the frontline, they will be doing an overview of these guidelines, they will have all kinds of information to help you with any questions you may have about COVID.
And they'll have ample tests to get to everybody who needs them, and please contact them, we will get them to you.
I have one question.
Sure. Are we ready for questions or are you done?
Oh yeah, I'm ready.
So there's no more delineation though between vaccinated and unvaccinated?
Correct.
On rate?
The CDC dropped out. Yes, sir.
And as far as testing and coming to school, that's all about the greater good? There's no, there's no way we can manage who's actually testing, who's not actually testing?
Correct. So even, even at the end of school last year, our test, if someone said to us, hey, I tested positive, we took that, we took their word. So this is what, these are all recommendations and we've adopted them. So yep, so to follow the recommendation, they said, yep, we count on them to say, yes, I tested, they're good, they got to come to school. Now, if, there always is, if there's a fever, you couldn't do it before COVID, a fever, even in our handbook, you shouldn't come to school. So if a child comes and is clearly high, it's not your minor symptoms, but they're very not feeling well, our nurses will send them home. And send them home with test kits and things like that, too. But we are relying on parents and families to let us know and do the testing. Yes, we are.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Drew.
I have one, like a clarifying question.
Sure.
For your, the new policy.
Mm-hmm.
So say, for example, and this is probably going to happen to my family.
Sure.
My children have allergies.
Correct.
And sometimes it lasts quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
So what you're saying is, so if it's the week long, they're to test the entire week and wear their mask? Or is it just for a couple of days, like if I know that?
So that's a recommendation. So if you wear your mask, and you know they have allergies and they test, and now their symptoms have subsided, they're not as pronounced, they're not as bad, now they can take off the mask and go because you've done your test and we know it's not COVID, it's the allergies.
Okay.
If they flare up again and we're unsure, that's when you mask again, request more tests, do your testing until they subside. That's the recommendation.
I didn't know if it had to be through the entire, you know, sometimes it lingers.
No, I get it. And one who has allergies myself, I know I get the, so I put the drops and I know what they are. But if I had any inkling that it would maybe be more, you wear your mask and we'll get you to test, do your test. And if you test negative, once they start to subside, you realize it's allergies, you can remove the mask and come back to normal.
I'm just doing this so that I can show my kid a little later, and I'm like, you have to wear your mask.
Yeah, there's going to be some questions and our nurses, that's why we're doing the PD, and they're fantastic, they are on it.
Yeah.
And if we do have outbreaks, we had the strategies in place like Mr. Emmett talked about last year, we get the tests out, we focus on those, and we stop it, and we continue on with minimal interruption. That's the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Cassio.
Thank you. Just out of clarification, if you could just let the board know and the parents know, can the nurse do the test for the student?
No.
No.
Just wanted to make sure.
They couldn't from the beginning, they wouldn't allow, because there's a certification for that, they cannot.
Right. I just wanted to make sure everyone hears that.
No, no problem. Yeah, that hasn't changed.
And they understand that it's not the nurse's responsibility to test the student.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Ms. Granato.
I just to clarify, too, for all of us and for the public sports, I'm sure the coaches are well aware of the protocols.
Absolutely. CIAC has put out their guidance to follow what our guidance is. So if they do test positive or anything like that, they have to isolate through the same thing and bring back with the masking. Unless you're outside, there's different variables, too. But all our coaches, Mr. Maltese has done a good job, we put the information out there, they're aware of our protocols and they will be following that arena as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bearball.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Emmett?
Somebody asking for popcorn?
Is that a better seat?
More expensive.
Is that, is that a better seat over there?
I feel lonely.
It's got a good view. Well, we'll certainly bring you into the loop here, Mr. Lackavoli. This, this presentation is really just a repeat of the work that we've done over the past year. So let me bring you up to speed with regard to where we are on the long-range building plan. There's been a lot that's gone on over the course of the summer, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of the process that we have gone through over the past ultimately five years to develop this plan looking forward in building the future of the Weathersfield Public Schools. So back in March, we presented this summary of enrollment projections in our elementary facility plan. We did a projection review, we did the enrollment drivers, we did an analysis of the enrollment, we did a projection summary, and then we ultimately came up with Facility Plan Scenario We've done our due diligence with regard to the enrollment study. The enrollment study was originally done in 2018. It was updated this past year and presented. Again, as they stated back in 2018, 19, they stated it again, Weathersfield is remarkably stable from an enrollment projection perspective, and we're not anticipating a large number of new students coming in, nor are we expecting a large number of students to depart the And again, this is our enrollment driver summary. So we did a variety of different algorithms with Patrick Gallagher from the SLAM Collaborative, who looked at the birth rate, actually went to town hall and got all of the birth rate data, looked at data at the state level, as well as our historical enrollment over the course of time. And you can see, again, remarkably stable. We looked at new to district by grade by grouping, we looked at new to district students' grades first through six, we looked at that historically to see what numbers we had coming in. And again, with the real estate market being as hot as it has been, although I will say with the interest rate going up, it appears that it is cooling at this point in time. We've seen a large number of homes turnover in Weathersfield, and we've certainly seen our fair share of registrations coming in. Again, we also took a look at whether your residents enrolled in Magnet, Charter, Tech, and Boag programs, that's certainly a population that we want to keep in mind, thinking ahead to if we build new or we renovate schools, we may see some of those students come back. We looked at historic enrollment trends, we looked at demographic and housing data, and we looked at assumptions. And again, based on the cohort survival methodology, we looked at this in the submission of our Here's what we're looking at in terms of our assumptions for projection moving forward. And again, right now, what we projected when we did the grant application and we moved forward with our 4D scenario, we're looking at the sweet spot right in the middle, 3,770 students. The blue is 3,910, that's the peak, that's the high assumption, and then the low assumption is 35, 35. Case six enrollment is projected to peak in 2930 at 1,931 students. And again, I just want to make sure that I bring you through the elementary school planning. So what we did is we took the enrollment study, we also took the facilities assessment, which dates back to 2018, and we developed a series of scenarios. And this work was extensive. We looked at a variety of different factors. We looked at renovating each school, we looked at status quo, just repairing the buildings we have, we looked at the building two new, renovating two and taking one offline. We looked at a variety of different scenarios. And with Charles Wright, which the board agreed would ultimately come offline in 2032, we certainly did our due diligence with that building in terms of test fit, in terms of looking at the available space we had. And frankly, we found that we just did not have the space to be able to fit a school building on that property without acquiring housing on either side of that property. It says here, Weathersfield is in the planning stages for two elementary school construction projects, so let me bring you up to speed on that. I am very proud to report that on June 30th, we submitted to the state of Connecticut two grant applications, a grant application for the construction of Hanmer Elementary School, and a grant application for the construction of a new High Crest Elementary School. Those have been submitted, confirmed, received by the state of Connecticut. So now, at this point in time, because of the fact we're able to submit by June 30th, we now have the ability to get onto the priority list for construction. Now where we need to go is we need to head toward the referendum. So after we got the grant application submitted, we worked with bond counsel to formulate the referendum language. That referendum language is predominantly displayed on our website, along with all of this data, our educational specifications, our facilities assessment, and all the work that we've done over the course of the past five years, to paint a picture as to what our plan is moving forward. What we're looking to do is we're looking to build two new schools. Again, starting with Hanmer Elementary School, would be a new building adjacent to the current structure, a new High Crest building built adjacent to the current structure. When those buildings are complete, the next phase would be the complete renovation of Emerson Williams School. During the renovation of Emerson Williams School, students and staff from Emerson Williams will go over to the existing old High Crest building, will use that for swing space. When Emerson Williams is finished, Emerson staff and students will move back to the newly renovated building. And then the final phase would be Webb School moving over to the High Crest, old High Crest building for swing space while the Webb Elementary School is renovated. What this plan provides is that no student will be involved directly in construction. We learned our lesson with the high school project. We had oodles of delays, we had all kinds of issues with noise, we had all kinds of delays with phasing, it was difficult to say the least. This project allows our students and staff to continue learning and teaching without having to deal with moving to portables, phasing, and making multiple moves on the site. From a standpoint of fiscal responsibility, we certainly can do the project much more efficiently, we can do it on schedule, and my expectation would be on budget. We shouldn't be dealing with cost overruns due to schedule delays. So that's the plan moving forward there. I also want to make sure that I'm clear in talking about Charles Wright, because I did have to deal with some questions about Charles Wright's closing this year. Charles Wright does not close until 2032, till the conclusion of the project. And the way it will work is Charles Wright students will go, some will go to Hanmer. And again, Ms. Drew, I'm looking at you, I remember bringing up in the springtime, how could we tweak those lines? It's exactly what we did. We tweaked the lines to bring some of the Charles Wright families over to the brand-new Hanmer building. Other schools that Charles Wright families will go to will either be Emerson Williams, which will be fully renovated, or Webb Elementary School, which will be fully renovated. So all students will benefit from a new or renovated building. Another one of the questions that came up, and I most recently presented before the Planning and Zoning Committee, actually just last week, one of the questions that came up was, well, why don't we just spend the $32 million to repair the buildings? Why go forward with $279 million ask? And the reality here is we have to look at why we're building and why we're renovating. Hanmer School, for example, was built in 1967. It was designed with 1967 in mind. High Crest Elementary School was built in, I think, 1969. It was designed with the open classroom model, which has been out of, you know, vogue for decades. We have buildings that are clean, to the extent that we can keep them clean, they are worn out. They are not designed to meet 21st century learning, they are not designed to meet the latest expectations around ventilation with heating and air conditioning, and they are certainly not designed to meet the latest in terms of safety and security. Building a new school or completely renovating a new, a school, an existing school, gives us the opportunity to start with a blank slate and allows us to be able to design learning spaces that are safe, developing vestibules so that I can't just walk into a building and get down a hallway. I have to go through a, what we call a man trap. We design the front facades that are specific, where you're not able to easily get into the buildings, just as we did at Weathersfield High School when we're going through the design process after Newtown. So we're able to start with a blank slate. I will tell you, as I've said to council, I said to planning and zoning, I know full well this is a heavy lift. $279 million is a major investment. We do expect with the reimbursement from the state, the total cost of the town is going to be approximately $163 million. I think with the due diligence that we've done with this process, it is time that we look at the facilities as they are, and we invest in the future of our children here in the Weathersfield Public Schools. I'd be open to any questions. I know, and again, I want to say to the Board of Education, thank you for your diligence with this. I know that this was a lot of work, this was a lot of effort, and I know that we've had support, both Republican and Democrat unanimously to move this forward. So I appreciate the work you've done. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Before I take questions, I do want to thank Ms. Granato and Mr. Cassio, they have been on the board for the full five years of this and have seen the fruition of this plan from day one. So we appreciate your hard work and dedication to it, along with you, Mr. Emmett. So thank you very much. Ms. Granato, did you have a question, comment?
I, just as we're bringing this out to the public, can you explain to us the board's role in some kind of timeline that we're supposed to adhere to? We're a little confused on it. So can you explain that?
Yes. I'd be happy to do that. So we will enter the silent period where we cannot advocate for this after the council next takes action on this. It is the last step before we go forward with referendum. The language, as you see on our website, the language has been developed. The council will look at this one more time and vote on it on September 6th. So we anticipate from September 6th through Election Day, that is our silent period. That is where our community, that's where our parents, and you see some of them here, you see some of our students as well that are with us tonight, that have been part of the process, and will pick up the torch and will carry this forward.
And just one more thing, is there any communication packet that we can give out to people?
Yes, we are working on a frequently asked questions document. I have a whole list of pictures. We discussed this, we actually met last Thursday, so I've got all kinds of pictures headed your way. In addition to that, we're waiting for the town to provide us with the tax impact. So I had a conversation via email with Mr. O'Neill late last week, provided him with the budget so that they can figure what the tax impact is on the mill rate moving forward. So we will definitely have communication out.
You know, and thank you, Michael, for bringing this to this place, because we worked very hard on this, but then it was in your hands to get it to this place. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Granato, I certainly hope, but again, I think we're at the point now where, you know, let's, let's let the voters decide where we head. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Lackavoli.
So you used the word advocate, so does that also preclude us from explaining facts, like sort of reiterating what you just explained tonight?
Yeah, great question. I will be getting additional information from bond counsel as to exactly what the board can and cannot do. One of the things I want to ensure is that we follow the letter of the law when it comes to the blackout period. Okay? We want to make sure that we follow that. We do not want to get into any type of liability. So I'll get something specific that will outline exactly what the board can and cannot do. So, thank you. It's a great question.
Any other questions? Mr. Cassio.
Yeah, just one of the things that the board might want to do, we did it when the high school renovation was underway, that we endorsed the project and we sent it on to the parents, so they had it for their website. So the board is unanimous in the fact of supporting this referendum for the elementary schools. So that might be something we can do as a board and bring it to the table at that point, so that you have it on your website. I have a whole notebook of what we did with the high school renovation. You know, I was involved with that, which I, wow, that brings me back. So, but yes, the more important thing is that this is a community project. It's, it's for our students, but more importantly, it's for Weathersfield. It's about, you know, what we need to do, not what we want to do. This is a need. This is something that is desperate for our community. You're absolutely right, our buildings are clean, our buildings are safe. Could they be cleaner? Could they be safer? Absolutely. Could they be brought up into the 21st century? We've worked our tails off with making it happen. Our teachers, our custodians, librarians, parents, everyone in the building, administrators, have worked to the nth degree to get it to where we are right now. And, you know, I think that the board took a big step in putting the bond referendum together and not splitting it. I think it's important to understand, there's something in this for all of our schools. It's, it's not just one school. Every school, every part of the Weathersfield will be affected by this renovation. And that's what we need to know, and that's what we need to tell people. Yeah, and it's a lot of money, but...
I think one of the things that was discussed last week, and again, from our perspective, we are focused solely on the educational purpose of these buildings. But you know how much our buildings are used, for youth sports, for religious groups, for civic groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Our buildings are used 24/7. So these buildings, I think the return on investment, yes, education is first and foremost, but to be able to provide the community with state-of-the-art, clean, safe, well-ventilated, well-designed buildings, I think it's a benefit. well-designed buildings, I think it's a benefit to the entire town. So thank you for bringing that forward, Mr. Cassio.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
E S Y, summer school update? Who's coming? There we go.
That's what it is. Come on now. Okay. Okay. Um, Chairperson Carrie, Vice Chairperson, Mr. Cassio, and all of the Board of Ed, we appreciate the time for us to share with you, um, our extended summer school services that we provide here in Weathersfield, um, over the summer of 2022. It was a very exciting... Am I good? (laughter) Thank you. As I was saying, it was very exciting to return to school this summer. After a very long, rigorous year, um, with ups and downs, we were able to reopen in full this summer with so many teachers, so many students, um, and so many community members that were able to participate in our summer school session. So we hope that this opportunity gives you information on those students that attend summer school, that process of attending summer school, um, those people that participated, the teachers, um, the students, related service members, and everyone else that was involved in our summer school session, and very excitingly, the community members that we were able to connect with over the summer, um, now as we move forward with more, um, traditional experiences that we've had now that the pandemic is waning.
Wow.
So, thank you, Liz, and, uh, good evening, uh, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I guess a couple of things. First of all, Liz will talk a little more about, um, the staffing that we had, which was wonderful, but I want to talk really about our, um, administration of the program, and especially in the hands of, uh, our supervisors, Special Ed, Liz and Randy. Liz handled everything from step one to the end of it, packing up boxes and everything else, um, along with Allison Quaid, our B C B A, and then Randy specifically working with our trauma-informed programs. Um, I don't think he left the room, um, working, coaching the staff members, working with the students, it really was a wonderful time, and as Liz brought up, uh, just, it was wonderful, be back in the building with, really, everyone back in the building, it was, it was great. Um, I'm going to talk about a couple of different pieces. Uh, first of all, it's Special Ed, so you know, we're going to use the acronyms, uh, so first of all, E S Y, Extended School Year. And this really provides, um, students with disability, Special Ed Services and Related Services after the school year ends. Um, this is the exception, not the rule for students with disabilities, and, uh, I'll say, it's really, well, first of all, it's based upon each student's I E P, their individual educational program, um, and must be considered at the annual review P P T, the Planning and Placement Team Meeting. So every student with a disability, after annual review, we at least have to consider whether they should have extended, uh, school year services or not. Considerations, they're really based on a lot of different areas, but we can break it down to two areas. Uh, the first is called regression and recoupment. Um, so especially staff that have been in education, you know this, most of our students regress after the summer months academically because they're not sitting down with, you know, the curriculum and the books, they're doing a lot of other things. Um, and with that, normally we look at least at the first week, I'm sorry, first week, first month, um, you know, maybe first, uh, two months, that they recoup, um, sort of what they lost. And for Special Ed students that we have data that they cannot recoup that loss within the first month or two months, that is one of the reasons why they may be considered for Special Ed, E S Y, services. Um, the second part, and even though it breaks down to different area, is really around the severity of their disability. Um, I'll say, first of all, this includes most of our students in our specialized programs, but even some of our students that aren't in our specialized programs, that we really can show that the severity of their disability, that they needed extended school year, um, to meet F A P. And another acronym, but F A P, Free and Appropriate Public Education. And so that's really the whys of, um, you know, why we provide the E S Y. And so with that, I'll...
I'm going to share with you a little bit of the structure of our program and how it runs on a day-to-day basis. I remember.
I wish we did.
Okay. Um, so we design E S Y as a multi-grade level, with multi-grade level classrooms. Our students attend programming four days a week, um, they attend for about three hours a day. Um, the most important part of our program is the individuality. Although this is a program that runs for four weeks over the summer, each program is still individualized to every student's, um, individualized education program, and focused on, on the goals and objectives that are specific to those students. Um, it's run in both small group and in one-to-one instruction settings, and throughout the summer, we do continuous, um, progress monitoring, we provide related resources as well as teachers supporting other teachers. This year, I think one of the most valuable pieces of this year was our staffing. Um, as I had mentioned, after a tremendous year of going through COVID, returning to school, um, returning with masks, and then not having masks, and all of the things that the teachers encountered, um, we still had an amazing group of teachers that extended into the summer school session. Um, we had not only teachers from our elementary level, we had teachers at our secondary level participate, we had, um, teachers, our related service members, we're teachers of the staff right now, um, as well as our paraprofessional and, um, behavior specialist staff. It was a tremendous help, um, and in partnering with the teachers throughout the school year, we were really able to provide a very thorough program for our students that were attending E S Y. Um, and that was greatly appreciated, because what we were able to do is not miss a beat. They ended their school year, and those teachers came back, and they, those students came back in July, and those teachers were ready to teach that Monday morning, and it really, really gave such positive energy, and the program was up and running without missing a beat. Um, we have included in our summer school student services, our LEAP program and STRIVE program, um, those are our specialty programs. We had programming, um, from our board-certified behavior analyst. Um, we also had OT, PT, speech, occupational therapy, speech and language, and physical therapy provided to our students. Um, we had structured literacy, our reading program provided to our students, um, as well as, uh, counseling support that was provided through our, um, social worker. Um, and again, that continued throughout the summer school service. I really want to talk a little bit about our participation rates.
Uh, yes, well, we had a, we had 134 students that was recommended, and pretty much 117 actually participated, you know, pretty much 12.7% decline, but it was a positive 87.3% of our students that participated in our E S Y program, which is tremendous. Um, I mean, the program, this is my first year with the program, the data speaks for itself, it was an amazing program, from the custodial staff, always to the teachers, and to the administration, that was on purpose and purpose of that.
So we can talk a little bit about the different types of programs that were provided for our students through the Extended School Year Services. Um, again, we had our preschool program that ran, um, through Extended School Year. We also had our pre-K LEAP program, um, and our K6 LEAP program. This was an extension of last year's program, um, as we had only needed two classrooms, and this year we needed three classrooms. Of course, our returning teachers also provided services over summer to keep that continuation of learning. We had our STRIVE program, um, that Randy had mentioned, um, that supports students, um, needing more support through our trauma-informed practices. Overall, we serviced 40 students K through six, um, separate from our specialty programs. We serviced, um, 18 students for our secondary program. Those students that required structured literacy support through our summer programming, um, were also provided that through one of our, um, trained, um, structured literacy teachers, um, here within Weathersfield Public Schools, and we had 10 students that attended, um, camp services outside of, um, our web program. One of the most exciting parts of summer school this year, um, something that we would, have not been able to do, um, and it kind of brings me back to the last time I did this presentation, um, when I was sitting at my kitchen table, um, as were many of you, and we had to do this through Zoom. But one of the more exciting pieces of summer school this year, um, was building, reigniting, I should say, those connections with the community. Um, and so we were able to invite the Weathersfield Police Department in for the summer, um, we had Officer Knapp visit every single classroom, um, and so many curious students asking why we were, why they were there, and we were able to talk about making those connections and reconnecting with our community help. Um, we had a day of reading where the library, uh, librarian came and visited every single classroom, so that every student, um, who was receiving E S Y services could log into Oceans of Possibilities, um, and they could log all of their readings so that they are ready to go for the beginning of the school year, um, and they get all of their participation, um, rewards for their summer reading project. We also had a visit from Nala, our reading, um, she is a dog that supports, um, students and provides therapy, and she was able to come back after several years of not being able to visit the program. And these experiences brought such joy. Um, it's sometimes a little bit hard to convince a group of students to come to school every day in the summer. And so it's things like these, it's reigniting our connections with the community, that brings joy and brings celebration to, um, some of those harder summer days where everybody would rather be at the beach. These were just some comments that were made by the people that participated. Um, you know, we had some teachers that we not only work here in Weathersfield Public Schools, but we also had teachers from other schools that had applied. Um, and, you know, they reported, there was an incredible organization, um, which I really contribute to Ali Pakita, our B C B A, who was also our supervisor, um, for summer school, um, and they look forward to teaching again next year. So, um, I look forward to them coming back. Um, we had parents thanking us for being part of their E S Y plans, parents in the building again, parents able to, you know, walk that little preschooler to their classroom hand-in-hand with us, so it's not such a big transition, um, but also being able to see the growth, um, that their children have made over four weeks. Um, and I actually had one student who was very near and dear over, I got to know very well over the summer school session, and he really wished it wasn't over yet. Um, so I invited him back next year, too. Um, overall, you can see some of the student outcomes, um, you know, those really, those data points that highlight the continuous, um, learning that happens over, uh, the E S Y session, students maintaining their skills for sight words, students maintaining their, um, reading, um, being able to maintain their comprehension skills, um, as well as maintaining their independence skills, um, and learning new skills throughout the summer school session.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So, this is required, correct, by, by law, right? Because it's an I E P decision, so we're required to offer, and this program's been going on for years?
For years.
Correct, so it's not new?
No, no, no. It is required by law, and at least at every I E P's annual review, we have to consider it. Then it's up to the P P T to determine, yes, a child needs it for part of F A P or not.
How many years was it in person because of our...
Actually, because two years ago, we actually came back for E S Y.
Okay.
Um, we, if people remember, like, we had sort of a drop in COVID in the summer, and then it picked up, um, I think it was, you know, after, like, died forth and sort of towards the end of, um, E S Y, that it picked up a little, so we were...
Last year, we were, we were out the first year, obviously. Um, and then from information that we received through parent, um, surveys, uh, we were able to return in person last year masked, um, with many of the COVID protocols in place.
Excellent, thank you.
Small cohorting, um, no visitation or anything like that from our community. So this year was a little bit more back to normal.
That's great. Any other Board of Members' comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
This is just a simple one. What is Camp Sunrise? Go ahead.
So Camp Sunrise is a camp in Glastonbury that's run. Um, E S Y, it's not only around academic goals, it's around social goals. For a lot of our students, and especially our secondary students, um, we provide sort of E S Y through the Camp Sunrise program that meets the criteria so they can build on their social skills. And so we tuitioned some students into, um, Camp Sunrise as part of their, um, I E P.
If I can just add one thing that is not captured here, um, the report that our teachers have with the students and the visits that we got from our teachers that were not even teaching and programming, but during a regular course of the year that was our students' teachers, they stopped in and visited their students during the summertime, and it was received very well by them, like, wow, and came in, so that's not presenting it, but that is a very important piece of our community that I enjoy tremendously.
Any other questions? Ms. Granado?
Um, just, why would a parent not want to do this? I'm just curious. Are they...
Summer vacations, you know, sometimes parents want to...
It's not transportation to get them there?
No, we have to buy transportation.
Okay, okay.
But I'll say, summer vacations are, you know, some parents, I, I want my child to really experience some fun getting out of school for the summer, and so, um, you know, they may choose for those reasons.
And just one other thing, this is great, this is wonderful. Could you get this to us before you do the presentation? I would have loved to have looked over this, and I'm serious, I don't know how that can happen.
Absolutely.
This is a wonderful presentation, um, and I would love to have read over it, instead of reading it while you're presenting it, so that would...
They didn't want to ruin the end of the story by then you read it? So they wanted to be excited?
I know, I know.
Keep the suspense from that to hell that way?
Anticipation.
Wait till next year. It was a page-turner, it was, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll have to get a golden retriever for every classroom.
Yes.
One for the meetings.
Or the voting booth for the bond referendum.
Mr. Emmett, continuing learning across summer sessions update?
Yes, if I could please have Mrs. Distoli and Mrs. McKenna come up and talk about the class program.
Um, I'm excited to be up here with, uh, Mrs. McKenna, um, and I want to first start by saying, uh, the success of our program, our summer school program, general education, we call it class, continued learning across summer, um, is really greatly due to the success and the wonderful hard work of Stephanie McKenna and Diana Beardsley. Um, they, uh, took this coordination in the summer program, added to it, enriched it, made it bigger and better than last year, um, so their success is, uh, their hard work is really, um, shown in tonight's presentation. Um, Diana's not here, she's taken on a leadership role in another district, so we wish her well, so I'll be standing in for her. Um, Stephanie will be talking about the, um, high school level, so a big thank you to both of them, um, allowing me to continue to do other work over the summer, so couldn't do without them. Uh, so, uh, class, unlike E S Y or, um, the, um, presentation you just heard that's required, um, this is the, um, third, second? Oh my God, I haven't...
Third for elementary, second for high school.
Third for, thank you. Third for elementary, second for high school, year that we've offered, uh, continued learning across summer. Um, it is not a requirement, um, we are funding it through ESER funds, um, currently, it's not within our district budget, but as part of our ESER funds, which is an excellent use to, um, enrich and continue to address our learning loss, um, that has happened during the pandemic. Um, so we really, at the K8 level, really have emphasized, um, continued academic learning, but really through social, emotional, fun, engaging, creative activities, um, and most important, providing excitement and learning, and again, socially as in our students through the summer, to continue that learning through the summer. Um, the second component of our elementary and middle school program is, um, a lot about transitions. Um, our Transition to K program that we've offered for over six years is now part of our class, um, schedule. We've offered four weeks for transition to kindergarten, um, transition to seventh grade at the middle school has, um, had more slots, and Stephanie will talk about the transition to high school. So that's a critical component of our, um, summer school program also.
And our goals for the high school, um, three goals. We had in-person credit recovery for students who lost credit, credit either because of grades or attendance, um, and we offered three classes this year, English, science, and E L L for English language learners. Last year, we were only able to offer one in-person class, which was English, and feedback we got from parents was, can we have more classes? So we offered more, um, and we had a great group of kids who came, came every day. We also offered, um, quite a few online ed... We also offered quite a few online edgenuity credit recovery courses, where students completed these courses online independently, but we offered computer lab time at the high school so kids could come in to work on their, their courses there during the, the school day. And then, we have some elective skill booster class, we had a transition to W H S class for incoming ninth graders, which I'll talk about a little bit more. And then, we had the online edgenuity S A T prep courses, which students completed online at home. And it's not opportunity, like Mrs. Soli said, for students to continue their academic, social growth through targeted instruction, and we were really happy to have the kids at W H S. We had our high school students and our middle school students there, so our elementary school students were at Emerson Williams, and then we had the middle and high school students at W H S. And Y class, there's always some unfinished learning, which I know has been mentioned in some of these other presentations, but we want to target academic support with opportunities to engage creatively, so students could work together, we could offer chances for them to supplement their learning, earn some credit, and help them transition to the high school. So, that was a really popular course last year, and we were able to, because we couldn't get everybody in, we were able to double students attending last year from seventy students to one hundred forty, and our goal is to do even more next year. So, you know, we were a little creative with that, changing things around, and keep your eight model.
Yeah, so we're excited to share at the K eight level, we offered thirty-six different offerings. That means that we had probably roughly thirty different staff members that stepped up and said, I'm real willing to work this summer. And so, like last year, we realized that staffing is our limited resource, so we really surveyed staff and asked them, what's, what's your passion? What do you love to do? And what will you do with our students? And so, we had classes, we had a new leadership academy for our middle school, that was new. We had a middle school teacher in June do leadership training for some middle school students, and those middle school students came to Emerson Williams and helped each week of our summer school sessions. They helped with transition to kindergarten, it was great to see middle schoolers helping those nervous kindergarten students, and working with them, helping students that might have been late to class, walking them to class, helping teachers, and it was a great addition, both a leadership opportunity for our students, but a great addition to help our teachers and our students in their programs. And we had some outside vendors like Mad Science, chess, we have a staff member who does sign language, Italian, cooking, ukulele, mindfulness, music, you name it, our staff had some amazing passions and creativity, math practice, book club, and on the next slides, you'll see some different, here are some of our art projects that we've done in some of the different art and music and other art classes that were offered. I believe the top corner is mindfulness and yoga. You can see some cooking, in fact, that looks like a pizza in the air, I was impressed by that picture. We have some math practice, our book clubs, music here, and this is some of our student, middle school student leaders and chess club in some of these pictures. So, we had a lot of engaged students that were excited and excited to come.
So, back to the nine through twelve model, the in-person transition to W H S course was a really popular one, I know the kindergarten one and the middle school one's also very popular, just to help kids feel a little easier about coming to a new school, a big school. We had a really successful eighth grade family night in, in the springtime, so we wanted to kind of extend that, and a lot of the kids came back, and they were excited to come around the building. We were not able to have the student schedules available because this was in July, unfortunately, but, you know, it's not till mid-August that we get the schedules finalized, so they, they went around, it was one session per student, three hours per session, we also offered seven different sessions in the month of July, and like I mentioned, we're able to double the amount of students attending this year. In-person English, Science, and E L L credit recovery all through the month of July, it was Monday through Thursday, eight to twelve, students came, they worked, we had great teachers participate and work with the students, actually had a sub a little bit, and, and I was able to take the kids on a field trip to the Weathers, we saw, we saw Mr. Emmett while we were walking over there, but we went to the Weathersfield Public Library, they actually opened up early for us, gave us a tour of the library, the kids all took out books for their summer reading, and they read it all during, for the English class, all during the summer, which was kind of exciting, for me at least, English teacher. Online edgenuity credit recovery courses, these were for grades nine through twelve, English, math, science, social studies, P E, health, students could take whatever courses they needed. We limited it to two, although some students did really well and were able to add additional ones on. I had one student who did in-person science and also completed three online edgenuity courses this summer, so I just want to brag about that student a little bit. But like I mentioned, we have, we had lab support with two teachers coming in during the, the work week, Monday through Thursday, eight to twelve, the month of July, students come in and they could work on their assignments and get a little extra help if they needed it. And then, we had an online S A T prep course, which was non-credit, it was just, you know, for students to kind of extend their learning for, and they focused on the math, reading, writing, and language, so that was done independently. And for the program, K through eight, seven hundred ninety-four students, and nine through twelve, we had two hundred nineteen students, so it's really exciting to see how many students were involved and spending the month of July continuing their education. As for communication with families, we use Parent Square to reach out to families, and I sent it out to eighth grade families all the way up to grade twelve, so I think it hit like over twenty-five hundred people in one shot, a little nerve-wracking hitting that send button, but, yeah, we, we got it out to a lot of people really quickly with a class website, which has been really helpful, links about all the courses, emails home, phone calls home for our W H S students, and edgenuity actually provides a weekly updated progress report to families about, you know, how their child is doing with edgenuity course, and then, a feedback survey from parents and guardians to let us know what we did well, what can we do to improve, because that's really important, and we take that very seriously, because we looked at that information to help improve our program for this year. And then, a little bit about the survey.
Yeah, as you can see from the results, the survey, again, this year was overwhelmingly positive about the goals being met and students and, and families wanting to come back to class activities next year. Couple comments within the survey, one person said, the teachers were wonderful, and my children were excited to go to every class because they made learning fun, thank you. Safe, fun, and free learning environment, so appreciative of all the time and effort that is put into coordinating the classes, and thank you for the teachers and other professionals that give up a piece of their summer to keep teaching. So, the majority, most of this program is free, our credit recovery class at the high school has a very, very small nominal fee, very small compared to neighboring districts, but this is all free to our families. More feedback, what aspect did you find most valuable? Keeping students engaged. And another parent said, everything. As an anxious parent with a first-time incoming kindergartner, I found the program beyond helpful in easing some of my fears and concerns with putting my son in public schools these days. I grew up in town and know the school, but it's much different sending my child into the unknown, so hearing from all the professionals was a major help in making this transition, but also mine a positive one.
And a little bit more about the, the nine through twelve results, we had one hundred forty students, like I mentioned earlier, participate in transition to W H S with Mr. Carr, who's one of our social studies teachers. Again, we doubled the amount from last summer because we were able to condense the courses a little bit, and we're trying to be creative for next summer to get more kids in. We had fourteen students participate in the online edgenuity S A T prep course, which they worked on independently. Nineteen students earned credit through the in-person credit, credit recovery courses, English with Ms. Fortuna, who's a teacher at the middle school, who's kind enough to come up to the high school to teach our English class, science with Mr. Chatfield, who's a science teacher at the high school, and E L L with Mrs. Burlow, who's our E L L teacher. Parent feedback last year, like I mentioned, they want additional in-person summer courses, we're able to offer that, and that was really exciting, and the teachers were excellent, it was, it was a great group to work with. We had forty-six students participate in the online edgenuity credit recovery courses, dozens of different courses, depending on what the student needed for the credit recovery, it was really individualized, and our school counseling department was excellent in helping me pick which courses were best for the students, so big shout out to them. We had sixteen students recover more than twenty-four credits this summer, which was outstanding. I mentioned we had the computer lab, we had thirty-three students who started their courses but didn't completely finish them, and they have the opportunity to continue them during the school year. We have an edgenuity lab, which Mr. Maltesse works with that over the school year, and those students have the opportunity to sign up for the edgenuity lab during the school year to finish up those courses that they began this summer. We have feedback from the family survey, I didn't get a lot of responses, I got mostly from transition to W H S, I only had twenty responses, but eighty-one percent of families agree or strongly agree that the goals of class were met, their child's experience was positive, engaging, and they'd recommend class to other families. And I also got some feedback, thank you, thank you for your support of the upcoming eighth graders, the opportunity created a welcoming environment, our students is excited for the start of school, and it gives a student the opportunity to ask questions and feel comfortable with the layout of W H S. Actually, I had one of my neighbors who did the transition to W H S class and now has Mr. Carr as a teacher, and he ran over, he's like, I've got Mr. Carr, he was so excited because he already met him for the transition class. And then, we, we chatted about this, but we've got some goals for next year, so I'll do that, okay. But based on the feedback and discussion, you know, we've got a great team working together. We want to continue to balance the academic offerings with S E L, that's a huge goal of ours within the district, and integrated offerings, additional topics, interests, recruit staff to teach classes, that's something that is always a challenge, but, you know, we keep, I think as teachers see the success of it and hear about how much fun it is in July to come back and teach, that it, it kind of, the word spreads and, and people are more interested. Offer more longer courses, number of weeks, length of day, schedule classes so students can attend more than one session in a day, and that takes a little, little coordination. Continue to provide more in-person learning opportunities for W H S students, we took that seriously last year, we offered more this year, and we'd like to offer even more next year. Additional sessions of transition to W H S sessions to meet the demands, and even though we doubled it this year, we'd like to offer more. And last year, we met to discuss our goals for the coming year, and we met those goals, so we want to continue to meet during the school year to, to set those goals. And then, thank you, you know, class coordinators, teachers, paraeducators, tutors, nurses, outside vendors who taught and supported these classes, it's, it, it takes a village, students and families who participated in class, central office, school administrators, Board of Ed for supporting and funding class, our school, school custodians and secretaries who are helping with the day-to-day activities, we're very grateful for their help, and keen after-school for, for recommendations for different vendors and classes to be offered. So, that's our presentation, do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, any board members with questions or comments?
Just a comment.
Ms. Granado, yes.
The, first of all, this is excellent, but I'm still in awe of the enrollment, seven hundred ninety-four students in K through eight, is that, that's a lot, right? Am I correct in the past? And two hundred nineteen high schoolers? That's fabulous.
Most of them were transitioned to W H S, which is so exciting, that we have so many eighth graders looking forward to, to coming to the high school, and hopefully, they feel a little more welcome and excited. And having the middle school classes at the high school, those middle schoolers were so excited to, you know, they're in eighth grade, excited to come to the high school, they got little tours of the building and could meet some of the staff, so it was, it's really nice to make those connections.
Thank you, great work, thank you.
And I think that number highlights the work that both Stephanie and Diana did with the program, scheduling, our classes often filled up, and we'd have to close them, communicate with parents, but I didn't receive one question about summer school class due to their communication and working with both staff, you know, probably forty-plus staff members and parents, so, again, kudos to them for such a high enrollment, recruiting staff, and engaging parents in our kind of in-person summer school for the months of August, primarily for months of August, some classes were offered in June, some in August, I'm sorry, month of July, a few in June, and a few in August.
Thank you, any other questions or comments, Ms. Drew?
I just wanted to say thank you, I'm one of the parents that had one of the incoming ninth graders going in for their transition, it's an amazing idea, and I, I loved to be able to send her off so that she could lessen her anxiety when she, because it's a very large school, she's, you know, and it, and she said she wasn't excited, but I know that she is, and I think that she feels a lot better now that, you know, she knows where to walk, what door to go into, so, which is always a problem, so I, I really appreciate it, it was a fantastic idea, and I look forward to seeing more of it.
Glad to hear.
Mr. Cassio?
Now, I just want to thank you, I know the board was struggling years ago about summer school and where to have it, and we were out bus, outsourcing summer school out of Weathersfield, so I think it's a great opportunity, the success of the program, the, you lead by example, Stephanie, so I really appreciate what you've done, and I hope at the next board meeting, you'll be able to play the ukulele.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, guys, thank you for all your hard work, Ms. McKenna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, board members, announcements and information, make sure you're, you're checking your weekly packets, and committee meetings should be starting soon, and if you can't make the committee meeting, let your committee chair know. There are no meetings held, there's no meetings scheduled, there's no unfinished business. Public comment, anyone in the public wishing to make comment? Please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, thank you, Board of Education members, for supporting the schools, my name is Brandon, and this is my brother Nolan. We go to High Press, I have a lot of students and not a lot of room, the gym is small, the caf is crowded, and our friends who buy lunch don't have a lot of time to eat because the lines are long. If we have a whole school dance party, we have to do it outside because we don't all fit inside the caf. We hope that the town people will vote for a new High Press. If a new school is built, we hope it is bigger, we would like windows in our classrooms, and, and our music class in a real music room inside the school building, a quiet space in our library would be great. Now we have cones set up to try to make a library space. The classrooms are in shapes that don't have names, and we would like square rooms, then the teachers would have room for posters, not bent on corners, and we would have four real corners for, to play, four corners. Outlets in the classroom would be helpful to change, to charge our devices. Our parking lot is small, so better parking and, and bus loop would be helpful. We love our school, teachers, and friends, but we need a bigger space for everyone to fit safely and be happy. Then all the kindergarten classrooms could be together, and the first grade, too, and then, and they may, wouldn't be mixed up around the building just because there was space in a pod for an extra class, and then, the sixth graders wouldn't be walking by kindergarten. Please help us get a bigger, newer High Press for our growing High Press family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, board comment. I will start by saying, Brandon, great job. Thank you for coming up and sharing what you wrote for all of us to hear. It's awfully brave. You're welcome. I still get nervous speaking in front of people, so don't worry. You did a great job. Any other board comments? Yes, Ms. Drew Roberts.
I really enjoyed tonight's meeting, hearing about the summertime and hearing Brandon talk. But, and also, yesterday I was at the first day of the new teacher orientation, and you could feel the enthusiasm. And I know they have a lot to learn this week, that they're anxious to learn so that they know how things work at their school and the technology and everything. But I don't know if it's just me, but I'm really feeling the excitement of the children coming back. I'm taken back to my days teaching, and that was what you just wanted to get to. You wanted to get to that first day when the children walk in the door. You're ready, as ready as you can be, and you want to get started. So just good luck to everybody. I know it'll be a great year.
Thank you. Any other board members? Ms. Granato.
Well, I too went to the new teachers orientation yesterday, and I was remembering my own very first days. And there, there's such times, it's, it's even hard to explain of excitement, and you're nervous, and you're energized for this new year ahead. And education has a wonderful uniqueness in its calendar. A year ends, we have a summertime of reflection and re-energizing. But then a whole brand new year starts, and you get to start all over again. So I was so pleased yesterday to have been part of this new teacher orientation. And Michael Emmett and Sally Distoli were the leaders of this new adventure for these very capable and most eager new teachers. This start had a buzz for success that was obvious to all in attendance. And Trent Donahue, our H R administrator, which also now they call talent manager, has found educators that we need right now when large numbers of teachers are leaving the profession. And that is scary, right, for all of us. We must continue to build this school system where good educators want to stay, and new talent continues to bring in new energy. So, you know, with all this positive new energy that we all felt yesterday, and 21st century elementary buildings, we all will know this great buzz for success. So thanks for yesterday, and great luck on the beginning of the school year.
Thank you. Mr. Cassio.
Thank you. Brandon, thank you. Carrie, thank you. And we wish you all well going to Highcrest. Have a good first day of school. But more importantly, I want to wish all the students and faculty and administrative team, I know they've already started, and they had a good vacation and rest, to a successful school year. It's important that we respect one another, and we learn how to act in school. And not only do the teachers have a big job ahead of us, but the parents need to be mindful of that as well at home. You know, encouragement, working with their students at home, and take time out as a family. So I just want to wish everyone a successful school year. And on another note, the Weatherfield Mayor's Charity Ball is holding a fundraiser on Monday, September 12th from 69 at the Charles. And this is, we have been doing this now as a community since 2015. And this is to help Children's Weekend Backpack Program, the Seniors Fresh Produce Initiative, and preschool scholarships within the town of Weatherfield. Tickets are still available. The cost per person is $125, and we welcome all of you to join us if you haven't. We're also accepting donations. I thank those board members who have already purchased their tickets, and we'll see you on Monday, September 12th. And one other thing, and I spoke with the superintendent about it today, and maybe he could just clarify and help us regarding dress codes in the schools. Just kind of brush over it for us, please.
In terms of what?
How it's in the handbook.
And we have dress codes in the handbook. I know I talked with you today, and you said that there was some scuttlebutt on Facebook about it. So I don't know if it's specific to middle school or high school. Be happy to look into it further for you, John.
So my understanding, the board does not initiate the dress code. It's a situation that's in the parent handbook as well as in the teacher's handbook. So just wanted to make sure board doesn't have anything to do with that. So that's basically what I brought it up. And hopefully people do come to school dressed appropriately. Helpful.
Thank you. Any other board members? All right. I also got to go to new teacher orientation, and it was great. Thank you, Ms. Distoli, Mr. Emmett. It was well done. There was a lot of smiling, happy new teachers, and it was a great atmosphere. I enjoyed it. Brought me back to many years ago when I was a new teacher. Also want to take this time to thank Scott Michaels. I believe he has now left the district as our athletic trainer, correct?
Scott Applebaum.
Applebaum. Michaels. There we go. God, it's wrong. But thank him for all his hard work. I've known him for a long time, had a lot of hockey, hockey games over my lifetime. So we will miss him certainly. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you.